Well, good morning, everyone. It is now nine o'clock a.m., and I would ask that you please stand for the invocation to be given by John Dewberry with Community Bible Fellowship, and then please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let's pray. Father, we love you so much, and thank you for this day. Thank you for your faithfulness. And Lord, I do pray and ask that you continue to cover our commissioners and their families as well. I pray and ask that you allow them to make decisions based on your kingdom rather than on their own self-agendas. I do pray and ask that they look out for the well-being of this entire county. I do ask that you allow them to see you as they make decisions. And Father, I thank you for all those that came out this morning to be a part of this meeting. In Jesus' name we do pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The meeting of the Board of Commissioners is now hereby called to order. Regarding the agenda, there are two amendments to the agenda. First of all, item 12B regarding the commemorative bricks will be removed. And then also, item 8B regarding the tax commissioner ordinance will be removed. And then we're going to add, actually, item 4A regarding the appointment to the Board of Tax Assessors. Are there any other changes or revisions to the agenda? Hearing none, I'm calling for a motion to accept the agenda as amended.
The move.
We have a motion.
Second.
And a second. All in favor? Any opposed? You have unanimous approval. Regarding the item that was added, we are now presenting the resolution to appoint Brad Fawcett to the Board of Tax Assessors to fill the unexpired term of Pam Adaway. Are there any questions or comments regarding this resolution? Hearing none, the floor is now open for a motion.
Move to approve.
We have a motion.
Second.
And a second. Are there any further comments or discussions? All in favor? Any opposed? Unanimous approval. The resolution is approved. We're now moved to resolution regarding the appointing of Victoria Lifford to the Board of Tax Assessors to fill the unexpired term of Leah Preston Frickley. Are there any questions or comments? Hearing none, the floor is now open for a motion.
Move to approve.
We have a motion.
Second.
And a second. Are there any further comments or questions? All in favor? Any opposed? Unanimous approval for the resolution to approve Ms. Victoria Lifford. We're now moved to item five regarding the Community Development Block Grant Program update, and we'll introduce Mr. and Stacey Hudgens-Wallace for that presentation, please, and also Ms. Olivia McPherson. And this is a presentation only, no action to be taken by the board. So, thank you.
Good morning, Chair and Board of Commissioners. We would like to present to you guys an update on Henry County's Community Development Block Grant for fiscal years fifteen to seventeen. And before our update, we would like to share with you an overall picture of the county's CDBG funding from 2012 to 2017. On average, the county receives an allocation of a million dollars each year from the Department of Housing and Urban Development. Henry County's CDBG funding is used to benefit low-to-moderate-income people in primarily three different areas: public service, public facility and infrastructure improvements, and rehabilitation assistance. Every three or five years, the Community Development Department prepares for your approval a consolidated plan. In this plan, housing and community needs are identified, and we strive to meet those needs through our partnerships with nonprofits, our cities, the housing authorities, and through our in-house rehab program. Our first category is public services. Our public service activities are awarded through a competitive application process because only up to 15% of the county's allocation can be used for public service activities. Award amount for these activities have ranged from 15,000 to 39,000 a year. Some of our current and past public service activities include medical and dental services, after-school program for at-use risks, sorry, youth, subsistence payments, shelter for victims of domestic violence, services for abused children, and a food bank. Our second category is public facility and infrastructure improvements. Most public facility and infrastructure improvements are done in conjunction with our cities. We allow our cities to submit proposals to our department as needed. Due to our limited funding, many of our projects are phased out over a couple of years to be able to provide the cities with the funding they need to complete their projects. Between fiscal years fifteen and seventeen, we have completed a total of ten projects. In the picture shown above, this is Memorial Park in the city of Stockbridge. Memorial Park was renovated to include an inclusive playground and equipment where all children, no matter their ability, can play. Our next project that we did in the city of Stockbridge is South Berry sidewalks and storm drainage improvements. We've also completed the same project in the city of McDonough as well. One of the last projects I'll be sharing with you is the McDonough Housing Authority Community Resource Center. This facility was renovated inside and out and is currently being used for trainings and seminars to help move residents to self-sufficiency.
I'm Stacey Wallace. You've heard Olivia talk about what we can use CDBG funds for, including the McDonough Housing Authority's Resource Center. Henry County CDBG and McDonough Housing Authority have been partners for multiple years for the purposes of improving the living conditions of the tenants. McDonough Housing Authority is undergoing a 118-unit modernization program. It will improve quality of life and increase self-sufficiency of the tenants. Two phases of the modernization are finished, and we are currently on phase three of the modernization project. Also, we have entered into a contract with Hampton Housing Authority. They have 25 units, and we will also do the same thing. We will be, they will enter into the modernization updates and improving the tenants' quality of life. Next, we have the Thai Street Program. Henry County is committed to creating a better quality of life for the residents, and that includes helping them maintain self-indecent and affordable housing. Henry County partnered with Synergy Real Estate to rehabilitate low-to-moderate-income households in the Thai Street area. As Olivia pointed out, CDBG funds were also used for sidewalks and storm drainage in the Thai Street area. That's the Berry Street that was, had the sidewalks. The Thai Street area is a good example of how CDBG funds are used to have a positive impact on the community as a whole. Southern Crescent Habitat for Humanity is another example of a partnership with an organization that we can help meet the needs of the community. Habitat for Humanity focuses on eliminating unsafe and unhealthy living conditions in low-income families, senior citizens, and veterans of Henry County. The Senior Home Repair Program is an eligible activity that meets the national objective of benefiting low and moderate-income persons. This is a county-wide program, and assistance is based on income eligibility. We concentrate on essential home repairs such as HVAC replacement, water heaters, roofs, etc., for senior citizens and households with disabled individuals. And here's some before and after pictures. Another program that we run out of the county is the Septic Tank Program. This has proven to be a much-needed program in Henry County. The program benefits low-to-moderate-income households of Henry County and minimizes health and environmental hazards through the repair or replacement of existing systems. To achieve the national objective to eliminate slum and blight, we are continuing to work with the code enforcement to identify blight in communities. From 2016 to 2017, five properties have been identified and demolished. To see how the CDB, BD, to see how the CDBG dollars work in our community, the homeowners receive surveys. We then use the surveys to develop and run the program to the most beneficial, to be most beneficial for our citizens. This is some upcoming activities that we have going on. The caper will be on the September 18th agenda for you to review.
I'm sorry, can you say that again?
The caper.
Okay.
Will be on the September 18th agenda. Thank you for your time, and that concludes our presentation.
Okay, well, thank you both. Are there any questions or comments from the board regarding our CBDG update?
Yeah.
I just had one request. If you could just remind the citizens who may be watching online, or even those that are here, how can they apply if they are in this category, and what timeline that they, you know, should keep in mind?
Well, the, we have the Senior Home Repair Program and the Septic Tank Repair Program. They can call the number here, the main number, ask for Community Development Department. They can ask for Stacey Wallace. It's an application, and it's on, you know, it goes by income. So, they just call the Community Development Department.
Okay, thank you. All right, thank you both. Okay, we will now move to our next update. Again, this is an item that will take no action from the board, but is an update from the Public Information Director, Ms. Melissa Robinson, regarding our Henry County Convention and Visitors Bureau Tourism Promotion Funds.
Thank you. Good morning, Chair. Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
This morning, I'm bringing to you to briefly discuss CBB funds that are available to the county for tourism promotion. In an effort to promote tourism events and attractions in Henry County, the Henry County Board of Commissioners has available to them a percentage of the hotel motel bed tax, which may be used toward the promotion and advertising of tourism attractions and events. A little history, the state of Georgia authorizes collection of an excise tax on accommodations such as hotel and motel, and currently those taxes collected in Henry County are 5%. Out of that 5%, 2% are restricted for the county to use toward promotion of tourism. So, to be clear about how we can use these funds, and sometimes it can seem a little confusing, the funds must be used for the promotion of tourism activities and expended outside the county to bring people into the county. The idea is that they spend time in our hotels, they eat in our restaurants, they buy gas and shop in our stores. The CBB, which is the body that oversees these funds, the Convention and Visitors Bureau, represents the county and the cities of Locust Grove, Hampton, and Stockbridge. And this year's funds are in the amount of $27,000, and that's available to market county events, festivals, and attractions. To give you an example, the money can be spent, if we have a fireworks event here in Henry County, we can't use the money to purchase fireworks. However, we can use the money to promote that event to people outside of the county to bring them into the county. Every year, we have this money, and we need to allocate the money by the end of the year. So, we're kind of at that mid-year point. It doesn't mean that we have to spend it and have everything done by the end of the year, but it means that we have to allocate it. So, if we know next summer there's going to be a big event, we can start looking for ways to promote that now. And I'm going to give you just a couple of ideas for things that we can promote within the county, and what I'll ask you to do is also think of your own ideas to present to county manager, manager, or me. Some ideas: Henry County Parks as a family reunion destination, specifically Village Park and Bud Kelly Park, because those have been identified by the CBB as ideal parks for family reunions. And family reunions bring a lot of people in from outside of the county. The Heritage Park Veterans Museum and Veterans Wall of Honor. Traditionally, in years past, we've spent a good bit of this money on those promotions. The museum is very unique to Henry County and very unique, actually, in the southeast area of this country. And then the Veterans Wall of Honor, it brings in tourism and is, is attracted to a lot of people. Also, Cotton Fields Golf Club, it's another, what I would call, tourism amenity. And if there's other things in your district or countywide that you would like to promote, that's what we're asking. We're not asking for action today. We're asking for you to think about these things and then to bring them to us. Some effective modes of advertising include billboards, targeted Facebook advertising, which is very popular, SEO, which is search engine optimization campaigns, and radio and television, although television can be very expensive and could eat up probably all of that money. So, if you have any specific questions, Laura Luker, the Director of the Convention and Visitors Bureau, is here today. If you have something you'd like to know about specifically, or if you think later you have something, just email me those questions or ideas, and we can vet them through that agency. Do you have any questions for me today?
Okay, we've heard the presentation. Are there any questions from the board? Okay, hearing none.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, we will now move into our consent agenda, and the following items shall be considered on our consent agenda. We have one in public safety to our Henry County Fire Department for a resolution requesting the approval to destroy the current fuming chamber. We also have one in the Leisure and Public Services Department regarding a resolution authorizing the Chair and/or the County Manager to execute community-based instruction and vocational training program agreement for 2018 through 2019 school year. Are either one of these items requested to be removed from the consent agenda for further discussion?
I want to have further discussion on the leisure one.
Okay, we're gonna, the leisure one and public service will be moved to the next item for further discussion. Are there any other questions or comments or suggested further discussion items? Okay, hearing none. What we'll do, we'll move the leisure and public service item to the next agenda item. Otherwise, do we have the approval to approve the consent agenda regarding the public safety item that is there? We have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Any further questions or comments? All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, well, we're gonna ask Mr. Rock Gray if he would come forward to address any questions that may come regarding the execution of the community-based instruction and vocational training program agreement.
Good morning.
Good morning. All right.
As requested, this is a resolution to execute community-based instruction vocational training program for the 2018-2019 school year. The purpose of this community-based instruction and vocational training program is to give students an opportunity to gain experience in a real work environment. Tasks include light custodial duties, which are supervised by the Henry County Board of Education Employees. Student gain experience in production, proper safety techniques, and appropriate work behavior. Henry County Parks and Recreation has been involved with this program for several years.
Okay. We've heard the presentation. Commissioner Clemmons, you have some specific questions?
Yes. Well, I think this is a great program, but I was looking at the other participating job sites, and I understand the needs of the students, but I was just trying to figure out if we had any leniency on the job skills. I see that the job skills are vacuuming, emptying trash, putting up chairs, wiping off tables, and sweeping, and it's supposed to be job skills. So, I had a recommendation that we look at something more like customer service, even though these students may be challenged in some areas, there's some other things that they can do besides vacuuming, picking up trash, and wiping off tables. I just didn't think that was a good look for the job skills. So, I would like to just have you to think about some other job skills instead of those.
Yes, ma'am. And these were just examples. I think depending on the skill set of the, of the individual, that we could explore other opportunities.
Okay.
But I think we're dealing with a lot of developmentally-challenged kids, and so we try to find tasks that fit their skill set.
So, what, what they have on the cheddars is, and Publix is customer service courtesy clerk, straightening up items in the offices, or things like that. I just don't want to put in there, in this resolution, emptying trash, wiping off tables, sweeping floors, and vacuuming.
Okay, we can strike that. Just, ma'am, we can strike that from the agenda. I'll send the amended version.
Okay, that's it.
Okay, did you say you're gonna strike it from the resolution, or what are you saying?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and, okay.
Is it in the resolution?
It is. It says specific that these job skills will be job environments such as job skills including vacuuming, emptying trash, putting up chairs, wiping off tables, and sweeping.
Okay, I'll take care of that.
Okay. Commissioner Holmes?
Does this program cost us any money in the past, and will it cost us any money in the future?
No, sir. This is basically just allowing them to bring them into some of our facilities and do some of the tasks, show them some of the tasks. So, we just provide the venue, really, is what we do. But from a liability perspective, we want to make sure that the commissioners are on board with this program and understand what we're doing. So, it's no cost, it's no revenue. It's just really a collaboration with the Board of Ed, with the kids, that they want to introduce to this program.
These are mainly high school kids?
Yes, sir. And they're supervised the whole time by Board of Education Employees.
Okay, Commissioner Clemmons?
Just another recommendation. I know that we just spent money to add additional staff to the senior center, so the senior center would be a great place with our kitchen being there to help serve the foods, you know, learning culinary skills and things like that. So, just consider, and we can discuss more.
I will. I'll reach, I can reach out to the Board of Education also and, and offer an expanded opportunities wherever they may, they may fit.
Okay.
So, if, if, if you, if you're comfortable with it, I can make that connection and offer additional opportunities. We're not locked in here.
Okay.
This just allows them to come onto our facilities, and you're approving that.
Okay. Okay, so, again, considering the amendment to the resolution, to strike just those skills, to definitely open up for other services, and know that you're gonna expand opportunities where possible, that's what's on their agenda. Okay, any other questions or comments from the board? Okay, hearing none, the floor is open for a motion for approval with those amendments. Okay, we have a motion?
A second.
And a second. Any further questions or comments? All in favor? Any opposed?
Thank you.
Okay, the resolution is approved with the amendments. Thank you much. Okay, hearing none. This now ends our consent agenda, and also the item that was removed from the consent agenda. We'll now move into item eight regarding our tax commissioner that will present an ordinance to amend the code regarding the occupational tax administration fee.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Board of Commissioners.
Good morning.
It's a privilege, privilege to be with you this morning. The purpose of this visit is to ask for an increase in the occupational tax fee. The, before I get started with that, I would like to give a huge thanks to Captain Bratton and the Code Enforcement. Without their help, I don't know that we could do the job we do. Henry County has grown significantly, and we have over 4,700 businesses as of August 2017, and it's just too much of a workload for us to handle in-house. And we've reached out for their expertise, and they've been a huge help to us. Currently, we charge $35 for an administrative fee. That fee was set in 1995, so we're looking at 23 years that that fee's not been adjusted. I've already told you that we've got more businesses today than we had in 1995. We've probably got three times as many. The workload's increased. When that first started, we had one employee. Now, we have three employees in the apartment. It's past due for an increase in the occupational tax certificate fee. I'm all for low fees, I'm all for low taxes, but I can tell you, I just opened a business in Stockbridge, and it costs $275 to open that business. So, this is not a huge increase to the business owner. It is, percentage-wise, from 35 to 60, it is big, but $60 in itself is not big. There's two cities already in the county that charge $60, so we're, we're following suit. We're not leading the pack in raising fees. If you've got any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. I believe you have a resolution in front of you, and, again, we appreciate your support and passing it.
Okay, we've heard the presentation. Are there any questions or comments? Hearing none, the floor is now open for a motion.
Move to approve.
We have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Are there any questions or comments? All in favor? Any opposed? Unanimous approval for that ordinance amendment.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, and we did have the next item that was removed from the agenda.
Yes, ma'am. We're gonna, we have some questions about that one. We're gonna go back and readdress it, and I'll present it later.
Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you.
We appreciate you. So, again, item 8B has been removed from the agenda, and we'll now move into item nine. And this is a resolution and senior services to award a contract for the purchase of food products and supplies for the Henry County Senior Services Department. So, we're inviting Mr. Rock Gray for that presentation.
Good morning, again.
Good morning.
This is a request to execute a contract for our four senior services for the food we purchase. Departmental personnel recommend the award of the purchase to U.S. Foods using the Sourcewell Contract, thus formerly NJPA. We are requesting a one-year agreement with two mutually agreed-upon renewals. We are a participating, participating member of the Sourcewell Cooperative Agreement Program, and this is a, this is cheaper than our previous annual contracts. So, that is the request.
Okay. Well, we've heard the presentation. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none, the floor is now open for a motion.
Move to approve.
We have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Are there any comments or questions regarding this resolution? All in favor? Any opposed? Unanimous approval?
Thank you.
Thank you. We're now moving to item 10 regarding a resolution to award the contract for waste wood grinding and removal services, and we'll invite up Mr. Javier up for the presentation.
Good morning, Chair. Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
This is one of the services that the Henry County Recycling Center provides to the citizens that bring wood debris, grass clippings, and this is a, the contractor, the service was outbid for companies, and the company that won the contract is to provide the service of grinding and discarding the wood debris, is called ADFS LLC, which is gonna be charging $3, $3.40 to ground the, to grind the wood waste, and it's gonna be grinding it, taking it away for $5.70 per cubic yard.
Okay, so, we've heard the presentation. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Okay, hearing none, the floor is now open for a motion.
Move to approve.
We have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, there's a second. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none, all in favor? Any opposed? Okay, the resolution is unanimously approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. We're now moving to our Department of Transportation resolution, and then we'll invite up Mr. David Simmons to present the resolution regarding the request to award a contract services to purchase reflective sheeting.
Good morning, Chair. Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
And this is a request for award of contract for purchase reflective sheeting. The DOT sign shop requires various materials to fabricate road signs, street signs, and directional information signs in-house, and having a contract for these items allows quick access to the project without necessarily, or without the necessity of bidding out or getting quotes each time we need it. And the guaranteed prices remain in, remain firm for the contract period. Seal bids were requested for various reflective sheeting items. We had one vendor respond to invitation to bid. Bid tab is attached, and we award, or we recommend award to Osburn Associates as the overall, obviously, lowest and most responsive bidder. obviously, lowest and most responsive bidder.
Okay, well, we've heard the presentation. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Okay, hearing none. The floor is now open for a motion.
Move to approve.
We have a motion.
Second.
And a second. Um, are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none. All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, the res- resolution was unanimously approved. Okay, we'll now, uh, move into our next item, which is a public hearing. And this is regarding the estate of, um, Gui Chin and the Marshall Trust trustee Yi Chin, um, which are requesting to abandon a portion of a public road known as Mount Olive Road. And again, we welcome Mr. David Simmons to make that presentation.
Okay, uh, as stated, this is a request for abandonment for a portion of, uh, Mount Olive Road. And, um, this section, uh, request to be abandoned is located between the southeast border of the Jodaco crossings, uh, site that, where you probably see grading going on if you go down Jodaco Road or up I-75. And on the northern border of the RV campground site, the advertise, or the abandonment has been advertised in the Henry Herald on August twenty-second and twenty-ninth. All the joint and property owners have been notified. And, uh, since we submitted this, I did get the applicant surveyor to tweak the plat, and I'll put that out. The area that's different. If you look in your package, this abandonment continued on up into basically the Mount Olive Fleet Inn into the RV campground area. So I had them pull the abandonment area back to the western, off the western edge of the existing Mount Olive Road, uh, so, to not affect any, uh, any sort of access with this abandonment. I will tell you, I've, I've checked the, uh, the plat and the legal descriptions that came with that and, uh, for accuracy, and they're all good. And additionally, I've checked through the Mount Olive right-of-way files and I found no record of the county actually having deeded right-of-way for this section. So this is basically an abandonment. It's, you know, sometimes we have a two-step process. We're doing an amendment and then we turn around, do an authorization for, authorization for disposal of the property. But considering we can't find any evidence that we have deeded right-of-way, we're just looking to abandon this right-of-way.
Okay.
And one other thing, this road that's being abandoned, uh, it's probably been closed to the public, I would say, a minimum of fifteen years. And I'll take any questions.
Okay, thank you. All right. Are there any questions or comments from the board?
Tell me where it is again.
If you look on this, the area shaded in blue is generally the area requested to be abandoned. If you see to the south of that, it's the RV campground. To the north, the aerial doesn't reflect it, but that's where all the grading is going on for the site that's, uh, within the city of Stockbridge, the Jodaco Crosses Project.
So it's in between the grading and the RV part?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
All right. Are there any other questions from the board? Hearing none. Um, this is a public hearing. So therefore, ten minutes will be granted, granted to those who are wishing to speak in opposition, and then ten minutes will be granted collectively to those, um, wishing to speak in favor. So at this time, we'll begin the public hearing. Um, are there any individuals collectively wish, wishing to speak in opposition of this resolution? If there are, please come forward now. Again, is if there is anyone wishing to speak in opposition, please come forward now. If there is any group or individuals wishing to come and speak in favor, we ask that you now come. Again, if there is anyone wishing to speak in favor, we ask that you do now come. Hearing none. Um, this now concludes our public hearing. We now, again, ask the board, do you have any other questions or comments before we call for a motion? Okay, hearing none. The floor is now open for a motion.
Move to approve.
We have a motion to approve.
Second.
And a second. Are there any other questions or comments? Hearing none. All those wishing to vote in favor? Thank you. I think that was unanimous. Anyone wishing to oppose? Thank you. It was a unanimous approval.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, well, at this time, we'll now move into item twelve, and this is a resolution that comes as a request, um, um, regarding the support of House Bill nine thirty, which is creating the Atlanta Region Transit Link, um, that was signed by the governor on May third of two thousand eighteen. So at this time, um, Commissioner Holmes and I will have a presentation. I do have some comments I'd like to make, um, before, um, in a presentation of some slides. I'd like to share and then invite Commissioner Holmes to also join in. So at this time, I just want to, uh, share some, some, some information with our citizens that are here, those that are viewing, and even with our board. Um, as we know, Henry County continues to be a very fast-growing county community. Um, just recently, it was announced that we are at two hundred and thirty-four thousand eight hundred individuals, and by two thousand forty, we are projected to be about three hundred and fifty thousand plus. And that's assuming about a two-point-five or two-point percent, um, growth rate. One of the things that we are continuing to hear about is concerns about transportation, transportation, transportation. And as many of you know, um, we are still having many challenges with our transportation infrastructure. Um, one of the concerns that we all have is how can we get our projects moving to alleviate the concerns of transportation and traffic congestion? Of all of the, uh, residents that we have here in our community, we have about sixty-eight thousand of our citizens that are commuting out of the county. We have about thirty thousand or so plus that are commuting inside the county. And we have eighteen thousand or so within our community that are traveling, um, within our own infrastructure that we have. And so therefore, we are part of the traffic congestion that we are experiencing in addition to the freight traffic. The other thing I'd like to also note is that the reason that we're in a challenged state right now is because we are right now moving projects that should have been addressed twenty years ago. And there's lots of issues about why, you know, why are we arriving here? Where are we dealing with it? But right now, I can tell you that this is a board that is committed to really addressing the transportation infrastructure issues that we have, and that also includes how do we maximize every form of transportation? The thing that I also say is that we've got to start thinking even more proactively into the future. One of the things that I continue to hear about, think about here as in our county is that we're trying to come out of the dark ages into the twenty-first century all at the same time. So you've got a board that has been committed to strategic planning. Um, there's been projects that were already submitted into, um, the Atlanta Region Commission. We want to commend the staff for following up on projects that were submitted, and we did get some funding of about fourteen million dollars this year for two projects. But guess what? We've got several other major arterial roads that are still in the pipeline that has a twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-five forecast, and we need help right now. The other thing that I want to begin to share with you is, right as I want to remind everyone, is that there was a joint Henry County and Cities Joint Transportation Plan that was approved in May of two thousand sixteen. If you advance to the next, um, slide. And, y'all know you can't read this, but one of the things that it pointed out is that in that study, there were several recommendations that were given to our county. It included feedback from our citizens. It included, um, analysis of crashes. It included, um, sightings of how much traffic congestion and where the arterial roads are. It looked at our, even our current transit system, and it basically said that we've got about a two-billion-dollar gap to address all of our transportation options. But it, I want to also point to you, if you look to the very far right column over there where it says transit, it basically says that we've got to start prioritizing transit projects as well. And so as we continue to think about how do we move Henry County forward, yes, we've got to continue our road improvements, road widening, even potential new interchange, but we've also have got to continue to enhance and expand our future plans for transit now and into the future. The thing that I want us to also understand is that we've had transit since nineteen ninety, so this is not new to Henry County. And what I will also share with you is that since, I think in two thousand fifteen, there were about ninety-three thousand trips on a transit system that we have today. It's called an on-demand system. So you call the transit system, they come, there's a fee. You have to schedule it. You get where you go, you have to schedule to come back as well. The challenge that we're also experiencing is that this is already at, we don't even have the capacity to serve all of those who are requesting services, and a lot of them are our seniors. But I also want to say regarding this comprehensive transportation plan, that there was a transit feasibility study that included the feedback from our citizens. And it basically spoke, if you'll go to the next level, next slide, that we've got to begin thinking about how do we definitely improve mobility around our county? And when people think about transit, I think we need to understand that transit not only includes the current transit buses that we have, but if you look at it right now, we've got to start continuing to focus on fixed routes. And yes, we want to commend Commissioner Holmes for what has begun there in the North Henry, um, section to identify a fixed route to get our seniors from senior centers to the, to, uh, places for entertainment and even, uh, hopefully to the medical centers. But we've got to look countywide. But the other thing that we've got to understand is that transit could also include, um, yes, we do, I need to go back and say that we have the express buses. That is existing already. But again, we've got to think of other reasons. We've got to think about bus rapid trains. And we've got to think about light rail, commuter rail, potentially heavy rail. And I tell you, people now today, it, I don't even know if I will see in my lifetime some of these things that we need to plan for today. So I, again, wanted to help us to understand that there are all forms of transit. We've got to even think about the future of autonomous vehicles, electric vehicles. These are the things that Henry County has got to plan for if we're gonna continue to be prosperous and to provide the opportunity for our citizens to enjoy the same options that are there in the northern side of our, of our state. If you go to the next one. So in the transit feasibility study, this, I pull this, I encourage you to go out to the county's website, the Henry County website, and pull the multiple pages, I think it's forty-six or so pages of the transit feasibility study. Now, keep in mind, this was done back in two thousand fifteen, and here we are in two thousand eighteen. And in that study, and here are some slides that came from it, the question was, do you think it is important to provide local services in Henry County or for our regional services? As you can see, based on the citizens' feedback at that time, fifty-seven percent says, yes, we've got to definitely have some regional connections, especially to the airport. And then there were some that says we've got to continue to look for planning here within our county. And then twenty-eight percent says, I think they're both very important. If you go to the next slide. So the question back then in two thousand fifteen is, what types of trips do you think that we should, you, consider for regional transit? Commuting to work and school. Again, there are sixty-eight thousand people commuting outside of our county. There are individuals that are going to the airport. There are individuals going to Midtown Atlanta. There are students that are attending school outside of this county. But guess what? There are individuals that says, yes, it would be great to also have some type of fixed transit option so that it allows us to go shopping, to run errands, to go to medical appointments. And yes, you know, thank goodness, we're getting some great restaurants around here so that we can do social trips. This is what our citizens said in two thousand fifteen. So if we go to the next slide. So just recently, as it was just stated, there was a House bill that was created for what they call the Atlanta Region Transit Link. And basically, this is an opportunity for the metro area to identify ways by which you can link your systems together so that if you want to travel from Henry County to even Alpharetta, you've got some options. If you want to travel from Henry County to get to the airport to catch martyr, if you want to catch another martyr connection to get where you need to be, here are some options, and they should all link together. They should all tie together. And so this is what this opportunity will provide to us. But it also says that in this regional, uh, regional board, that this is going to be the way that communities can hear from their citizens, think about future plans for transit. And if the community decides that they want to have some funding to expand and develop their transit, the money stays there, but it's got to tie in to the rest of the Atlanta regions and to also benefit from state and federal funding. So this ATL Board is an off, is a group that is going to be formed similar to GDOT. Right now, if we expect to get some, some, some funding, state and federal funding for even our roads, it has to start from a prioritization of plans and projects that their citizens have to identify. It has to fit into a regional plan, and then you are afforded potentially the opportunity to get state and federal funded. And those are the things that we're fighting for today on roads that should have been, uh, done, identified and the road worked done twenty years ago. So if you go to the next slide. Here are ten different transit systems right now that exist in thirteen counties. And please make a note that up to the far left, that Henry County has a transit system that is already identified in this, uh, this regional concept. And so what is happening, each community decides on their own what their transit looks like, but it's got to connect. It's got to link up. And this is what this ATL Authority will help to oversee, to govern. But again, the community on its own will be, identify what initiatives and projects that it will have. So if you present the next one. So this ATL Board is almost organized like the GDOT Board. Henry County will fit within two different districts. There's a District Nine that includes the DeKalb and Clayton and Henry. The next one, the District Ten, will include, um, I can barely see that, but Henry and Clayton and all the western part of, uh, Fayette and, um, Calwita Counties over to the west side of I-75. So Henry County has an opportunity to be represented in both of these districts. And again, the concept in all of this is how do you organize yourself so people can think regionally? So we've got an opportunity in two different districts. So this ATL, um, Atlanta Region Transit Link Authority is in the process of being organized as we speak. By the end of this year, there are gonna be board members that are gonna be selected to help link up all of the transit systems for now and into the future. We, Henry County, need to have a seat at the table. We've had a seat at the, at the Atlanta Region Commission. Sometimes we took advantage of voicing the needs of Henry County. Sometimes we didn't. But I will tell you right now, we're taking advantage of every opportunity at the Atlanta Region Commission. Our staff is meeting with GDOT on a more frequent basis. You've got commissioners that are sitting up here fighting for specific corridors in their districts that we need help for, and we need help right now. The other thing is, we know that we're in the midst of a SPOS five, um, solicitation process. Right now, we're hoping that there's gonna be lots of, um, transportation and opportunities that we can identify, because I will tell you, when I talk to GDOT, when I go to ARC, the thing that they say is, if you want to move those projects up, you're gonna need right-of-way acquisitions, and you're gonna also need more local funding to accelerate it. Otherwise, they can stay in the long-range plan for seven to ten years, and then on average, it takes about seven to ten years to even build a road. And here we are talking about something that's gonna take probably even longer. And if we don't plan for this right now, we're gonna be sitting here twenty years from now, thirty years from now, wishing that we would've, could've, should've. And that is not the best thing for our seniors, and not the best for our young individuals. Their habits are different than ours. And I will tell you that the biggest thing we need to think about is our air quality. We've got to understand that we've got to be strategic. We've got to make sure that we educate and help our citizens to get engaged in our future infrastructure. And we need to plan this together, but also make sure that we have a voice at the table so that Henry County can, again, continue to service its communities and our, and our citizens for jobs, um, and, and everything else that we want just as badly as anyone else. So I, right now, ask Commissioner Holmes if you've got anything else that you want to add to this, and then I'd like to hear any questions or comments from the board.
Thanks, uh, Chairwoman. Um, I think you did a good job with, uh, going over the actual transit plan. Um, I think this resolution today shows that we're prepared to, um, to move forward. Um, but I don't think it goes far enough. I think, um, um, if you look at District Nine, Henry County is the only county that doesn't have skin in the game. So I do believe that we need a seat at the table, but in the situation we're in today where we don't have any skin in the game, if we do get a seat at the table, we don't, we won't have influence um, at that particular table. But I am happy that, um, the board is at least discussing this very important issue. But I am happy that the board is at least discussing this very important issue. The county needs to move forward with it. I-75 rail will be important to Henry County's future. It's not going to happen tomorrow, but if we make, if we make the commitment today, citizens that move or migrate to Henry County 20 to 30 years from now will be in position to reap the benefits of economic development. The real companies that we need in Henry County that will actually contribute to our commercial tax base and reduce the tax burden on our residents. So this is very important and I'm fine with moving forward with this resolution today, but we still need to commit a portion of our SPOS or, or, or the T-SPOS to move forward with a very serious transportation plan. So with that, I'll turn it over to any other board members who has a comment.
Okay. Are there any other questions or comments from the board? Commissioner Barron.
Yes, I, I do support this resolution today. We're part of the 13 counties. Whether we want to or not, we're part of it and we need to be part of it. And by passing this resolution, I hope we're going to get two seats on that board. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any, Commissioner Wilson?
I also support it as well, but having a seat at the table, we, we will also have the voice of telling, telling ATL what we don't want. We tell them what we want to do down in our county. This belongs to our county. We know what we need here. So we don't need outside counties and board members telling what we need in our county. So I think it's important, we have seats at these tables to let them know what we don't want as well.
All right. Other questions or comments from the board?
Well, hearing that, I do want to say one other thing. Commissioner Holmes is exactly right. Henry County doesn't even have a transit project, even in the regional transit concept plan right now. We've got a lot of work to do. And even in that comprehensive transportation plan, it says all we've got to do is identify some prioritizations. I also agree with Commissioner Wilson. Commissioner Wilson says that, yes, we've got to plan what we want in Henry County. And I will tell you, when we had the town hall meeting on transit, one of the things that the chair of Gwinnett spoke to us and we made it clear that we did not want to be like Gwinnett, we didn't want to be like any other community, but we wanted Henry County to be its own. And she said that the best thing that you can do is be, plan ahead. And she envied us for at least having a conversation because we know in at least 12 years plus that we're going to have a ton of more people coming here. And she says, I wish we had done a better job planning. But here's the other thing, we need to understand where we want it to be and what part of our communities that it doesn't be. And I also say that we've got to even think about a safety plan in the future as we talk about that because that's part of what a lot of people are concerned about. I agree with Commissioner Barron. We've got to start voicing our opinions and having a seat and not only just having a seat, but coming up with prioritizations. The best thing that this board has done already has given a whole list of different projects that are priorities for our county. And what we've got to do is come with one voice and to help push those projects forward. And then we're going to need to continue to make sure that we're leveraging whatever dollars that our taxpayers contribute towards our infrastructure, that it is done in a way that we can all support. So thank you all for those comments. Are there any other comments?
Hearing none, the floor is now open for a motion.
So move.
We have a motion.
Second.
And a second. Are there any further questions or comments? All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, we have five approval and one opposed. Thank you. The resolution moves forward. We're now moving to, the next item, actually just make a note that item 12B was removed from the agenda, so we're now moving to our public comments section. So at this time, do we have any public comments?
Chair, we have two signed up today, Sarah Billups and Vivian Smith.
Okay, thank you. Well, we welcome our citizens to voice their county-related concerns and opinions which are not listed on the agenda. And all persons wishing to speak, must sign in with their county clerk and will be given five minutes to speak. So at this time, if you will state your name and address for the records and we will grant you five minutes. So good morning.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Board. My name is Sarah Billups and I live in Stockbridge. I actually came for one thing, but I'd like to just very quickly say, as I was listening to the information on the block grant funds, in Stockbridge, we seriously need sidewalks. I, I know there's a plan somewhere for sidewalks to be done on Flippin', and I just would like to encourage you to please try to move those projects ahead. It is very, very difficult when you're driving to see like young people walking way out in the grass because they're trying to avoid traffic because there are no sidewalks on Flippin' and it is very dangerous. There's a lot of traffic there. And I'm just really concerned about it. I would really hate to see one of our kids get hit because it, the, the conditions are not safe for them. So I just wanted to take a couple of minutes and I'd also like to speak positively about the changes that you all made, made the, the report on with the block grant funds. I, I loved what I saw of the work on Ty Street. I know was one of the areas that we really needed to address and I appreciate so very much to see that you are taking an interest in Stockbridge because a lot of times I, I see other areas and I don't always see work being done in Stockbridge. And because I live in Stockbridge and therefore I have a vested interest, I, I just want to thank you. I think it's wonderful, the work that I saw that you all have done here in Henry County. And I'd really like to encourage you to really move in looking at those sidewalks because that's a very, very real issue. It actually can come down to life and death. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Okay, our next speaker?
She's got Vivian Smith, Vivian Thomas.
Good morning, board.
Good morning. If you'll state your.
My name is Vivian Smith. And that's how she has them, but actually I go by Vivian Thomas, so for correction there. My address is 107 Bayberry Hills, McDonough, Georgia. I came today to present on one of your items that you took off your agenda, but I do want to present it anyway, simply because I need you to be thinking about my concerns if it does come back on the agenda for the next month or whenever it may decide to come up again. And that's concerning canvassing in Henry County. I'm offended that that item even came before this board. When we think about going door to door to share literature with different people, I go back way back. When people told us that certain people like me were not allowed to read, when I had to go to school and certain pages were torn out of books so that we didn't have all information. So when someone starts talking about what information can be circulated, who can circulate and how it's circulating in the community, I'm concerned about the fact that information is being censored. I'm concerned about the fact that my freedom of speech is being infringed upon. And let's think about this for just a moment. Passage of such a resolution by the commissioners was shut down grassroots operation campaigns. Nonprofit services use this operation to tell about their services door to door, door to door. Churches share their literature to small communities and large communities by services they have to offer. Small businesses often walk around looking for teenagers to work for them. Many people use flyers to let the needy and the disabled and veterans know about their services. That old fashioned door to door is a process that people use to be very personal with their community. To have you think about charging us a permit fee to go to canvass any type of literature. Have you thought about the Girl Scouts going door to door? What are you going to do? Charge $100 for every Girl Scout that goes door to door to sell any type of their cookies or look for customers? This is an old fashioned tradition that helps communities stay close to be able to talk to each other. Have you thought about the fact that there are people who are shut in and can't get out, who only know about things because people come to their houses and share information? Just on yesterday, I was in a senior citizen facility. Because they didn't know what was happening downstairs, I said, look, let me go door to door and talk to these people. They said, oh my goodness, I didn't know. And they came down to an opportunity for a meal and get information about senior services, went door to door. The fact that you want to charge people for that is, to me, is absolutely ridiculous. The fact that some of you would even consider this isn't offensive to me because I don't want anyone telling me I do not have the right to learn from other people and nobody has the right to determine who and how I get information. If you decide to pass this, what's coming next? Will you then censor the internet by, by zip code? Who gets the internet? Will you then censor who put plaques on their cars or their, their cars, different signing? Will you then censor what radio station would come to Henry County? Will you then determine what type of TV station would be here in Henry County? We do not need you starting to tell us how to circulate information. When you start trying to tell us how to circulate information, again, you're infringing upon my right to express myself, my freedom of speech, and you do not have the right to do such a thing. I'm embarrassed because Henry County has a serious digital, excuse me, digital gal. Not everyone has a computer. I'll go as far as to say, many of you cannot function or use your telephones as well as my 15-year-old grandson because we simply can't keep up with the technology. Not everyone is comfortable using the digital media. So they depend upon us to circulate information different ways. You took the time to talk about different forms of transportation today and we need different forms of transportation. We need different forms of communication and we do not need you to penalize us for using different forms of communications. Will I be looking up one day and talking to you about the fact that I want to do something on the internet and you want to censor that as well, charge me a permit for that as well? I want you to think about what you're doing. And I want you to look at this and say, this item does not need to be on any agenda. You do not need to talk about what we're doing with flyers in the community. We do not need you charging $100 per person to go around and circulate information. We do not need you to start talking about charging us a permit fee for giving our free information to the needy. Will you then turn around and talk about what do we do about food pantries? How do we get that information out to people? I just want you to think about the implications of what you're doing. There are so many football teams and baseball teams that do this on a regular basis and we don't need you to get involved in that particular business.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you. Well, that completes our public comments section for today. We'll now move into item 14, which is the approval of the minutes for the August 13th at 9:00 AM called Board, Board of Commissioners meeting regarding the millage adoption and also the minutes for the August 21st at 6:30 PM regular Board of Commissioners meeting. Were there any suggested changes or revisions to the minutes? Hearing none, the floor is open for a motion. The floor is now open for a motion to approve the minutes. We have a motion. Is there a second? And a second, thank you. Any other questions or comments? All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, the minutes are approved as printed. We're now moving to item 15 and just allow any commissioner to make any comments that they may have. Okay, Commissioner Clemens?
I have a question for, I guess a comment for the county manager. The process of funding our budget was so stressful this year. And I know that based on the raises and supporting the comp plan, we're going to have to look at some increase in our budget possibly next year. We kind of talked about how you would update us when you decide to do the pay raises and, you know, where you are with the comp plan. So if you would just give us an update on where you are with the comp plan, I would like to know what process you're going to use to inform the board when you began to do the pay raises. And then I've looked at a little bit of the Archer Companies' recommendations and I would urge you guys not to sway too much from that. If you do, make sure that we are aware of it so that we can support decisions that you make. Just give me a little update on where we are with the comp plan and what's going on with that.
Absolutely, Commissioner, and I do apologize because the intent was to have a presentation to the board this morning regarding the class and compensation study. But it's taken a little bit longer because we did actually have an opportunity to meet with all of our department heads, all of our cluster leaders and representatives from our judicial system regarding the initial draft report that was prepared by the Archer Group. There were, I won't say several, but there were a number of concerns raised by staff or by our department heads in terms of some of the positions and the classifications. And so we've given the consultant an opportunity to go back and revisit the classifications for some particular positions based on the job responsibilities. It is my hope to have that to the board for the next meeting in September and then you all will have your initial presentation. But as I committed during the millage rate and budget conversations, we will bring it to the board for final adoption. And I do agree that we certainly will support the recommendations from the plan because that is why we retained the consultant to come in and really give us a, not only quantitative but qualitative approach in terms of how we were determining how the classifications would be determined. So that will come back to the board. It will require board action and certainly will require the board's approval for funding.
So when it comes to the board, is it going to say, this is a list of employees, this is what's recommended by Archer, this is what we've changed or recommended, or how does that look to us?
What it should look like is a draft, or not a draft, it will be a final report from the Archer Group. And what you will receive is a list of all of the positions that are currently within our organization, what the previous classification for those positions were and what's being recommended by the Archer Group. You'll also receive some recommendations from staff in terms of options, in terms of how we will fund it. As you know, we've talked about looking at our, at least the initial request that we asked the consultant to do was to develop a class and compensation plan that was fair and equitable. What we are also looking at is adding a component in terms of years of service to that worth that's already been done.
Was it their recommendation or Archer's recommendation?
That was staff's recommendation. Archer Group, their only charge was to look at the current classifications, to reduce the number of classifications and to reduce duplications in positions. So if you have positions in which there were four or five different titles, they were charged with coming back saying, you only need one title for this position and then developing what that title looks like. But I will tell you, everything that's presented to the board will be the initial recommendation from the Archer Group. And then if staff is looking to do anything above that, you all will have a sheet that shows, this is what the Archer Group recommended, this is what staff is recommending. And again, it is solely based on the job description, the performances, and if you've heard me mention a couple of times, one of the primary goals of developing this class and compensation study was based off of, off of the performance analysis questionnaire. And that was what the consultant used to determine what the positions called for.
And let me tell you my concern. I want to be informed, number one. Number two, because there's going to be some fiduciary responsibilities that we're going to have to look at. But if Archer made this recommendation and this causes us to have $3 million increase and then staff has made another recommendation and then this gives us a $7 million increase, I want to make sure that as a board that we get to decide whether we want to increase the budget by $3 million or $7 million based on an expert that we paid a lot of money to tell us that this is sufficient. So just make sure you, you explain perfectly that we would see those three columns. Give us an opportunity as a board to look at that so that everything is transparent, so that we'll know and we can make those decisions. Of course, if, if you guys have added a criteria that you've come up with that was not recommended by the consultant, give us an opportunity to do that so that when we come around next year to fund that budget, there's no questions that we, we made sure that that's what we wanted to do.
Interesting.
Okay.
Can Commissioner Holmes?
Sherry, in the spreadsheet you gave me about a month ago, there was no, there was nothing in that spreadsheet regarding the directors. And so can you talk a little bit more where we are with the directors and how many directors are outside that, that salary range?
Well, the directors was a part of the class and compensation study, so that should have been included in the documents. If that wasn't provided, I was certainly provided.
It was the employees.
Okay, I will provide that information to, to you and all of the board members so that you all will have the same information. That is part of the class and compensation study. All directors actually had to submit a performance analysis questionnaire as well. In some cases, you do have where there are directors that are above the maximum based on the analysis that was done by the consultant. And if we do have directors or employees that are above that maximum, they will not see an increase in their salaries because the, the whole idea is to make sure that we were able to get everyone in line with where they need it to be. Now, going forward, that may be something that we as an internal staff will recommend to the board in by adding performance. Years of service is just an additional component that we're looking at. And the years of service component actually came up after we did the public safety reset because that is how their, the basis for their reset was done in terms of years of service. And so that is what we were doing in terms of making sure that we have a consistent platform for all of our employees. Now, I will. Now, I will say again that the department heads are a part of the class and compensation study and I'll be sure to provide that information to the commissioners. But please also understand that if a department head is listed and they are already above the maximum for that position, those department heads will not receive an increase.
So how about yourself and the Assistant County Manager? Are you guys included in the comp study?
No, sir. We did not submit a performance analysis questionnaire, nor are we included in the class and compensation study. The board sets the salary for the county manager and for the deputy county manager. And any increases to our salaries will require board action.
Thank you.
All right, other questions? Commissioner Clemens.
I just want to commend you and Brad for what you just said. Because you guys have such a hard job with this comp study. You're going to catch a lot of slack for people that are not going to feel that they're treated fairly. So it's our responsibility to make sure that we support what you do. Just be open and transparent. And the fact that neither one of you will be receiving a raise is really good because it's not about you. And so I'm glad to hear you say that.
Thank you.
Commissioner Barm?
Yes, I'd like to ask County Manager to give us an update on where we are on the airport hangars, renting those.
We have not had any requests to have one full hangar leased. We have had some individual requests for the community hangar in which individuals are renting space for their particular aircraft. But in terms of the two hangars that are not designated as community hangars, we have not had any requests to utilize those as of today.
Now, you talked last time we had this discussion. You was looking into hiring somebody to try to help us lease those out. Have we done that?
No, that has not been done. What we are looking to do now is to get through the FBO process and all of the SPOSS items that are currently ongoing at the airport. We have talked internally in terms of long-term, the management of the airport. And that is still a must-do, going-to-do directive that I know that the board wants us to look at. But at this point, we have two or three major projects that are going on. As you all may be aware, we have SPOSS funding for our FBO. We have a displaced threshold project that's ongoing. And right now, the capital projects are moving forward. But that is something that we certainly will continue to look at.
Okay. Next question I have is the recycling. And I've had a lot of people ask me, you know, where we stand on the recycling. They want recycling centers to stay open. Can you give us an update where we are on the recycling center?
In terms of an update, the recycling center is still open. There has not been any recommendation from my office to this board to consider closing the recycling center. But I will tell you, as we begin to, believe it or not, start discussing our next year's budget, we are having to look at the impact that the recycling center is having on our general fund budget. As I mentioned to a number of you all during the budget conversations, we aren't gaining a lot of money in terms of the recycling center. While it is certainly a benefit to the citizens of Henry County, our expenditures are certainly outpacing the revenues that we are receiving. And so we've had some conversations with individuals that have been interested in maybe taking over the recycling center. But based on the type of permit that we have, we are not able to sublease or allow anyone to come in and run the recycling center. Obviously, the board will have to make some decisions in terms of the long-term feasibility of the recycling center. And it will take money. It certainly will take money because we're operating a recycling center with limited resources currently. And so that's something that we certainly will have to evaluate in terms of needs and services that we want to offer to our residents.
Yeah. Well, I certainly understand recycling is not a money-making business. But I hope that we can come up with some kind of plan for Henry County residents to be able to bring stuff there. Even if they have to pay a small fee or something for chipping limbs or whatever they have to do. But we certainly need to try to maintain that to be open.
And I assure you, our staff certainly has some models and options available for us to keep the recycling center open. But again, it will cost money to make sure that we're able to do that.
Yeah. The only other question that I would like to see is, I would like to get a financial statement each month. And I don't know if any other commissioners would like that. But I think we in charge of the money, we need to be keeping up with some financial statements. So if you'd make sure that they provide those, I'd appreciate it.
And you're saying financial statement countywide or for the recycling center or?
Well, no, I'm talking to countywide.
Countywide, okay, very good. And so that the board knows, one of the charges that's been given to our Financial Services Director and his team is to provide an update to the board every month regarding our finances. That is something that obviously if you're managing a county and if you're managing the type of budgets that we have, you need to know prior to the budget hearings where we are financially. And so please be prepared to start hearing some updates in terms of where we are from a general fund perspective and also from an enterprise fund. Because keep in mind, we also have the airport, we have our golf course, and we have our stormwater departments that are enterprise funds. And I think it's important for the board to understand the type of revenues that are coming in, but also how we're expending those funds. And so that is something that I've already charged our staff with making sure that not only am I being updated, but the board as well.
All right, thank you. That's all.
All right, Commissioner Clemens.
Sherri, on the recycling center, when we started talking about the recycling center, I inquired with you about the companies that have the contracts or the ability to provide services in our community. And I know for me, I've disseminated the information to constituents of District 2 that if you have waste management or whoever service you have at your home, if they are providing service in Henry County, they are obligated to provide a recycling container at your home. And what I've been telling my constituents is, ask them for it. If they do not provide it, then let me know. And then we can go to code enforcement to make sure. So that's information that I think the county needs to know as a whole. Maybe this is a good article for the Henry Herald to put out to let our citizens know that every organization that is providing trash services in Henry County is obligated to provide that recycling container at the homes. And I think a lot of people don't know that. And one of the things that, when we were talking about closing the recycling center, we're paying for this and our citizens don't know that they can ask for that recycling container.
Commissioner Clemens is absolutely correct in terms of, we have a county ordinance that requires our waste industries or waste management groups, I don't mean waste industries because that is the name of a business, to provide recycling services to unincorporated residents. Now, obviously, it is a fee that will be associated with it, but they are required to provide that service. And so what we'll do, Commissioner Clemens, is we can certainly make sure that we send this information or at least post it on our county website. We'll share it with our media outlets and hope that they will pick it up and cover it as information to share with the residents.
Well, they certainly picked up that we were closing the recycling center. So hopefully they'll pick that up.
So noted.
All right. Any other comments from commissioners? Commissioner Wilson?
Yes, I requested that Exhibit Number 10 to be pulled from the agenda, and this is one. The commemorative brick was to recognize the Henry County Government, along with the four cities, to go up to the National Emergency Training Center. And we completed the course up there to recognize that we've done so. And that brick was to be purchased from the Fallen Firefighters National Memorial. And with that money, that brick was going to be put in place up there at the National Fallen Firefighters Memorial. Now, with that being said, there's two memorials that I think should be supported. There's the Fallen Firefighters Memorial in Emesburg and the Law Enforcement Memorial in Washington, DC. So with the exhibit, it shows that we was going to ask the Henry County to provide the $250 for the brick. So what I'm challenging everyone with is to make donations to our Henry First Program to go to both memorials. And I'll be the first one to pledge $100, $50 to each memorial for that purpose.
Anything else, Commissioner Wilson?
I see. Thank you.
Okay. I will also make that pledge to join as well because I, first of all, let's just speak about that training that we had up there in Maryland. Want to commend Don Ash and his team. Want to commend each of the cities, our public safety teams and others that attended that training. It was something that, I tell you, I'm glad that Henry County had an opportunity to experience. You had the top leaders there that worked at the Pentagon, those that were there on site at 9/11 that sat down and gave us some recommendations of what we needed to do if we had multiple terrorist attacks happening at the same time. And that was FEMA training that actually the federal, through the grant that Don Ash and his team applied for. So we really had to just invest in the time to be there and a meal ticket, which was horrible, I will tell you. It was just a bad, sleepless nights, bad food. But the training was amazing. And many of us walked away with, oh, my God. You know, things are happening in the world. We pray that it never happens here in Henry County when you've got things happening at multiple locations in the school system. But what is it that we need to learn from? And to hear the experiences and the testimonies of those that came to that training, we walked away with a different mindset. And the different mindset is, you know, how do police and fire, you know, work together? But how do you coordinate with the hospitals if you've got multiple fatalities? What do you do with the school system? And, you know, what do you do with road closures? And even how do you handle the employees? And making sure that you even think about, how do you house individuals if any type of major disaster occurred? And so we walked away with all of that information. It was a week-long training. And I will tell you, I also want to commend the team because they've already had what they call a hot wash, meaning that they invited everybody back to that training and it says, okay, here are our takeaways. Because even while we were there, we had to identify some specific things that we were needing to do, even as elected officials. How do we coordinate even with each of the cities that were there? And more importantly, how do we be better prepared if something like that happens here throughout our county? And so we've already had a review of that. There are some action items that are happening as we speak. Looking forward again to the next steps. But I will tell you, it is going to be a significant culture change, in my opinion. And so we're going to be working through that. And what I wanted to do is commend all of those that, you know, took it serious while we were there. And now trying to make sure that we're working towards, how do we better protect our community? And I do want to commend FEMA for at least offering that grant. Henry County was the first county in the state of Georgia to take advantage of it. And people were just pleased that we would take the time across, as a cross-section, cities and county and multiple disciplines and public safety and in staff to help prepare for something that our community hoped would never experience. So again, I just want to say thank you to all of those that invested that time and energy to, again, help us be better prepared to keep our citizens safe. So while we were there, we did experience a lot with the firefighters and police. And so Commissioner Wilson, thank you for your dedication to trying to memorialize those who've given their lives already. So is there anything else, other comments from the commissioners? Okay, hearing none. We'll go now to the county manager's comments.
Yes, Chair Wood. I know typically during public comment, we don't provide a response. But I do know that we had some individuals that had questions. Can you hear me now? Better? Okay. I'll try to speak more into the mic. But I know that typically we do not provide comments during the public comment period. But I know it's important when we have agenda items that are on the agenda and the items are removed, that we do provide some explanation. I know that we had a couple of commissioners that had some concerns regarding the item that the Tax Commissioner was presenting. And so I've asked our county attorney if he would just update the board in terms of what that ordinance entails and what we currently have in place. So if you will allow Mr. Joxiter an opportunity to just provide some additional information to the board and to the public, I would appreciate it.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Sherri. There were some concerns and some legitimate concerns raised by Ms. Smith during her comments. I do want to let the board and the public know that the proposal put forth by the Tax Assessor's Office applies only to businesses selling goods, subscriptions and such, door-to-door. It does not apply to political canvassing, religious or political fundraising. It does not apply to charitable organizations. Our ordinance already addresses those things that those organizations are not required to pay any fee. And the new ordinance does not require them to pay any fee. The only people that have to pay a fee to register for door-to-door canvassing are those people selling products, essentially profitable businesses. So if somebody's selling magazine subscriptions or cable TV service or cell phone service, I think those are the three things that I've had come to my door. Those are the types of canvassing that the ordinance would address specifically. Religious charitable organizations and charitable fundraising aren't required to pay that type of fee. So I just wanted to make that clear to everyone. We will certainly look back again at the ordinance and make sure that that's clear and make sure that there's nothing in that ordinance that would hinder the types of activities that, obviously, that Ms. Smith described and that I understand the board is concerned about.
All right, well, thank you.
Oh, I would comment about that if I could. So that's fine. I think what we need to do is to change the word because the definition of canvassing is a systematic initiation of direct contact with individuals commonly used during political campaigns.
Well, we have, our ordinance defines canvassing differently. So our ordinance defines canvassing as calling on residences, and I'm summarizing, for the purpose of soliciting orders, sales, subscriptions or business of any kind. So we apply a more specific definition to the word canvassing than you would get.
My concern is that we may not be the board that's here in the future.
Well, that's what the law says. I mean, that ordinance is our law and our legal, our definition is the only definition we can enforce. Our ordinance specifically says that you're not required to pay a fee if you're engaged in political canvassing. Yes, another board could come and act a new ordinance. Now, I'll tell you, I'll tell everybody. An ordinance prohibiting door-to-door political campaigning is blatantly unconstitutional. And either I or hopefully whoever's sitting in this chair at the time will urge you not to do that. A ban on religious canvassing is blatantly unconstitutional. And I hope that either I or whoever's sitting in this chair will urge the board not to adopt that. Doesn't mean a board won't raise their hands. But those are, those types of things are already exempted in our ordinance. And yes, there's nothing you can do to prevent another board from changing an ordinance. But the definitions, those are contained within that ordinance.
No, that's, I'm not saying about changing. If you have one ordinance that says canvassing and someone is not aware, and I'm talking about staff, somebody goes in, code enforcement person, I just think that definitions need to be clear and clarity. Had this come before us, it would have needed to say, except those relating to whatever in the other ordinance. And name the other ordinance because we want to be very clear. We're a board that, Chair Wood has just been saying about the future, the future. We may not always be sitting here. I'm a literature English major. You can't say canvassing and expect somebody 20 years from now not to think that that's canvassing because they haven't read the other ordinance. They don't have a chalk setter.
Right. And we'll certainly, we can certainly do that. You know, the, it's, that's an easy thing to do. It'll be a bigger rewrite than we anticipated here. And I'm certain I can get with the, with the Tax Commissioner to make that happen for you.
Okay.
Okay. County Manager?
And then just a final comment. I will defer to our Deputy County Manager regarding an upcoming event for 9/11.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioners, we will be having, or we will have a little ceremonial event on 9/11 at 11 o'clock in the bottom parking lot beside the flagpole for our county staff and anyone who wants to participate involving our honor guards. Be a short presentation for our chaplains just to keep that memory alive for 17th anniversary. So I just want to make sure you guys are aware and definitely invited. There'll be some more literature out this afternoon from our Communications Department.
Okay, very good. All right, anything else?
That's it, Chair.
Very good. Okay. We're now moving to our upcoming meetings and events. For the Board of Commissioners, on September the 18th, there would be our regular Board of Commissioners Meeting at 6:30 p.m. And then on October the 2nd at 9 o'clock a.m. will be our regular Board of Commissioners Meeting. We do want to remind everyone about the SPOSS Five Committee Meetings that are coming up. There is going to be one on Thursday, September the 6th at 6:30 p.m. at Ola Elementary Cafeteria in District 3. And then on Thursday, September the 20th at 6:30 p.m. at JP Mosely Recreation Center in District 4, there would be a SPOSS meeting there in the community room. And then on October the 4th, which is a Thursday at 6:30 p.m. at the Fairview Recreation Center at the community room in District 5. So those are our upcoming meetings and events. And I understand we've got an executive session that we need to have today.
For the purposes of real estate acquisition and personnel matters.
Okay, for real estate acquisition and personnel matters. So we now call for a motion to enter into executive session. Call for a motion to enter into executive. We got a motion. Is there a second? Yeah, we got a second. All right, any other comments or discussions? All in favor to enter into executive session? Any opposed? Okay, there was a vote of five, and Commissioner Barm was not here. All right, so we'll now move into the executive session.